The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Council meeting in Farmington and ask you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's a special night. We're going to begin our meeting with two presentations, two awards. And really, tonight is a very special night and it really gives me great pleasure to be able to be here tonight to speak about two gentlemen from town, Donnie Ante Giovanni and Steve Jones. They've been here for, well, all their lives, pretty much. But tonight, we're honoring them for being 50 years in the volunteer fire department in Farmington, 50 years. So, there are a few things that, before I do give them a proclamation that I wanted to talk about, I don't know if you want to just come up and stand with everyone while we chat a minute? I thought it would be fun to go back and see what was going on 50 years ago. So I went into a little bit of the history to look and see what was happening. Some of you may remember some of these things and some may not. 50 years ago, Neil Armstrong landed on the moon. Woodstock, if any of you remember Woodstock? And the bands that were there, The Doors, Janis Joplin, Jimi Hendrix, Crosby, Stills, Nash &amp; Young, some of them, we actually see some of the members around today, at Infinity Hall even. But those were some of the bands that many years ago. 50 years ago, PBS began. Walmart started its smaller stores at that point. Monty Python, do any of you remember Monty Python? That began 50 years ago. And Sesame Street, that's something I certainly remember, and we may have a few right here today that remember Sesame Street and know the new version. 50 years ago, a couple of popular things in dress, the bell bottoms and tie-dye shirts. And I'll bet some of us have tie-dye shirts, maybe one in our closet for possibly Halloween or something. But that was a fun time. 50 years ago, a gallon of gas cost 32 cents. A loaf of bread cost 23 cents, a dozen of eggs 62 cents, and a gallon of milk a dollar 10 cents. Amazing. One of the things that came about when I looked in the historical information was that an alarm clock was $9.98. Not that that's so meaningful, other than the fact that it was an alarm clock. And I don't know how many people today, or kids, will even know what an alarm clock is. Usually, it's a phone today, or some other gadget, or maybe our computer that wakes us up, but certainly not an alarm clock. So, it's kind of interesting to look back at that. So, that brought us back to the events that were happening 50 years ago. I also did a little bit, or I had a little help with some information 50 years ago in the fire department. In 1969, we had 230 volunteers and two career firefighters. Today, we have 146 volunteers, nine career firefighters, and another part-time firefighter. So it just shows you how many volunteers it took to take care of the town at that point. One of the things to remember, though, is that 50 years ago, there were 14,000 people here in Farmington. Today, there are 26,000. So there are a number more people, almost, you know, 12,000 or so more. But also, think about if you were just going through the town, going down Route 6, or Route 4, or the mall, or the medical buildings, of how many more people are working here in town? We have 32,000 people coming into town to work, and only 26 that live here. So that says a lot about Farmington itself, the town, and what we need with a fire department. And through the years, we've just, we truly have been blessed, and we are today, with all of our volunteer fire department and the full-time people as well. But we have an amazing group of people, of men and women, that are here and that have given back to the town for so many years. And I think one of the things that I wanted to mention that's not in the proclamation when it talks about what they've done over that time, is the mentoring, the guidance, the people that they've brought in, the men and women, into the department and worked with for 50 years, when you think about that. It's a lot of people, a lot of volunteers, and it's even generations of people. When I thought back of different families that have been in town, and we've seen sons or daughters or, that are involved today, some names that you'll be familiar with that were here years ago. I also wanted to mention the number of calls. The number of calls in 1969, 205 total calls, none of which were medical. So all fires, whether it be a brush fire, or was commented, could have been a cat, and it could have been anything, but it was not medical. Today, we have 4,100 calls, total calls, 3,020 are medical. So you look at that, what a difference in the fire and the needs and what our volunteer firemen and our full-time firepeople need to know today. Just so much, well, everything's changed. But we just, we have a lot of training that goes into this, being a volunteer fire department. The other thing that I wanted to mention was who the chiefs were 50 years ago. And interestingly enough, you're going to recognize some of the names. The Tungstus Hose was Joe LaShack. Now that was a name, and there were other LaShacks involved in town and right here at the Town Hall years ago. Jimmy Collins was the Farmington chief. None of you remember Jimmy? Bernie Pearson, Oakland Gardens. And Robert Peterson, East Farms. And those names, we know people that are involved in the fire department today, that their family was years ago. And today, I'm proud to say, we have Rich Higley here. Rich?
Rich Higley.
For Tungstus Hose and Donnie Ante Giovanni, Farmington, and Russ Nelson for the East Farms. So, it's just, it's interesting, the names of people that have just recurred over the years and the volunteerism that's been here. So I just wanted to personally thank, on behalf of the town and everyone, their service, not just for the year, 50 years of service. And we also should all give a happy birthday tomorrow. I know, you didn't want that. But it's his birthday tomorrow, yep. And so, but we really, I just want to thank, on behalf of the town and the citizens, thank both of you for 50 years of work. And it's not over. You're still involved today. Right. And I doubt that you're going to go home and sit. I'm sure you're going to be very involved for a long time to come. So, with that, okay, let me get Donnie's. Whereas Donald A. Ante Giovanni has served the town of Farmington as a firefighter with the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department for 50 dedicated years, and whereas Donald A. Ante Giovanni has served in many roles during his time in the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department, such as firefighter through the chain of command and at his current position as chief, which he's served in for over 20 years. Whereas Don Ante Giovanni joined the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department in August 1969, reaching a 50-year milestone in August 2019, and still continues to provide dedicated service to the community as an active member of the department by responding to numerous calls for service, holding a position as one of the top responders for the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas Don Ante Giovanni is a veteran of the United States military, serving for eight years dedicating himself to his country, but also dedicating himself to his community and his family. And whereas Donald Ante Giovanni has made significant and lasting contributions that have fostered the well-being of the citizens of the town of Farmington as a firefighter and to the United States of America as a veteran in the military. Now therefore, the Farmington Town Council hereby commends Don Ante Giovanni for the excellent work on behalf of the community, and we congratulate him on his 50 years of service in the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department. The Farmington Town Council hereby proclaims April 27, 2019, as Donald A. Ante Giovanni Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this, the first day of April 2019, Nancy Nickerson, Chair of the Farmington Town Council. And it just, yeah, stay right here, though. Now, whereas Stephen W. Jones has served the town of Farmington as a firefighter with the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department for 50 years, and whereas Stephen W. Jones joined the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department on February 27, 1969, and continues to provide dedicated service to the community as an active member of the department by responding to numerous calls for service, and whereas Stephen W. Jones has served in many roles during his time in the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department, such as firefighter, president, and his current position as treasurer, and whereas Stephen W. Jones is a veteran of the United States military dedicating himself to his country, but also dedicating himself to his community and his family. And whereas Stephen W. Jones has made significant and lasting contributions that have fostered the well-being of the citizens of the town of Farmington as a firefighter and to the United States of America as a veteran of the military. Now therefore, the Farmington Town Council hereby commends Stephen W. Jones for his excellent work on behalf of the community, and we congratulate him on his 50 years of service in the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department. The Farmington Town Council hereby proclaims April 27, 2019, as Stephen W. Jones Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this first day of April 2019, Nancy Nickerson, Chair of the Farmington Town Council. Before you go, do each other a hat.
That's 100 years of service in one picture there. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, what a great tribute it is tonight to have so many of you coming out to honor this call, Donnie Ante Giovanni. So that's just so much.
Thank you.
I wanted to make note of how impressive it was that in 1969, they were serving on the fire department with everything else going on in the world. That is cool.
Very nice. Next, we'll have our public hearing. Kathy, or Nancy?
I think it's Paula.
Oh. Notice is hereby given that the town of Farmington will conduct a public hearing by the Town Council on Monday, April 1, 2019, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall, 1 Monteith Drive, Farmington, Connecticut, 06032, to discuss the fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and solicit citizen input. Maximum award units limits, $1,500,000 for public housing modernization, including pre-development and construction. Up to $800,000 Housing Rehabilitation Program, up to $1 million for infrastructure, for example, streets and sidewalks. Up to $350,000 for public services, youth homelessness and shelter diversion programs and participation with CAN. And up to $1 million for public facilities, for example, construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or installation of public facilities and improvements in fire protection equipment. Major activity categories are acquisition, housing rehabilitation, public housing, modernization, community facilities, public services, and economic development projects funded with CDBG. Allocations must carry out at least one of three national objectives: benefit to low and moderate income persons, elimination of slums and blight, or meeting urgent community development needs. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain citizens' views on the town's community development and housing needs and review and discuss specific project activities in the areas of housing, economic development, or community facilities which could be part of the town's application for funding for the year 2019. In addition, the town's current 2018 Small Cities Grant for Public Housing Modernization will be discussed to obtain citizen input on it. Also, public hearing will be to give citizens an opportunity to make their comments known on the program and for approval of the program income reuse plan. If you are unable to attend the public hearing, you may direct written comments to the Town of Farmington Town Manager's Office, 1 Monteith Drive, Farmington, Connecticut, 06032, or you may telephone 860-675-2350. In addition, information may be obtained at the above address between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. on Monday through Friday. The Community Development Housing Department on behalf of the town of Farmington anticipates applying for the maximum grant amount of $900,000 under the Public Housing Modernization. In addition, the town will create a revolving loan fund with program income, principal and interest generated from the grant, if any, for the Public Housing Modernization Program. The town of Farmington promotes fair housing and makes all programs available to low and moderate income families regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, gender, identity, or expression, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familial status, learning disability, or physical, mental disability, or sexual orientation. If you are unable to attend the public hearing, you may direct written comments to the Town of Farmington, 1 Monteith Drive, Farmington, Connecticut, 06032, or you may telephone Kathleen Egan at 860-675-2350. In addition, information may be obtained at the above addresses between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. In addition, the town's current 2018 Small Cities Grant for Public Housing Modernization will be discussed to obtain citizen input on it. All are encouraged to attend. The hearing is accessible to the handicapped, and any disabled person requiring special assistance or non-English speaking persons should contact Erica Robertson, ADA Coordinator, at 860-675-2350 at least five days prior to the hearing. Equal opportunity affirmative action. Nancy Parent. Thank you, Paula.
That's a mouthful.
I know.
But the Connecticut Community Development Block Grant, also known as Small Cities, is funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The primary focus of these grants is to benefit the low and moderate income persons. This program is only available to Connecticut towns and cities with population of less than 50,000. Thank you. Communities participate in a competitive application process, and that's what we're a part of right now. This year, there is 11 million in funds available. We have hired Tom Foley from Signal Rock Consulting to assist us in writing the grant, and if the application is approved, he'll assist us in managing the grant. We will be submitting an application requesting $900,000 in grant funds for improvements to be made to New Horizons Village. The application will include exterior envelope upgrades, which will include roofing, siding, new doors, windows, and insulation. In addition, we hope to improve accessibility to the units by providing new walkways and lighting. Last year, the town was awarded $800,000 grant for similar improvements to other parts of New Horizon Village. The Department of Housing saw the need for these improvements then, and we hope that they'll do that again this year. The application is due next Friday on April 12. For the past 32 years, New Horizons Village has provided accessible apartments and supportive services for individuals who are physically disabled in Farmington. It is a unique and highly sought-after facility that does provide a really warm and supportive environment for most residents. It is a difference between living in a nursing home and living in the community. I have with me here today Chris Murray, who's going to give a little bit more information about the grant and just say a few words from New Horizons.
Thank you all for having me here. My name is Chris Murray, and I am the Chief Financial Officer at New Horizons. I don't live in Farmington, but I love Farmington. And I live right over the line in Bristol. First off, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the 101 people who call New Horizons home. It is an amazing place where people with severe physical disabilities live independently. We don't provide meals, we are not a nursing home. These are independent living apartments, and if you haven't been to our 26-acre campus, it is right near here, and they love visitors. Very often, people in the neighborhood will walk around our area, it's a big circle, and it's just, it's a beautiful campus, and our residents are very proud of it. When you move to New Horizons, people stay, they stay. We were started, actually, we've been talking about 50 years tonight, just over 50 years ago, New Horizons was a dream by a bunch of people who lived at New Britain Memorial Hospital. And that is how it started. It started with these strawberry festivals, which is why it's so important for us to continue that every year, so that we can maintain the honor of what it was, as people wanted to live independently and get out of a hospital. We were built, believe it or not, before ADA existed. We were built in the 80s, they bought the property in the 60s, and it took them 20 years to raise the funds to build this property. The property is a little bit rundown, like the rest of us that are this old, and it really needs some help. Our doorways are not wide enough for the wheelchairs, for the massive wheelchairs that some of our folks have. The chairs alone weigh 500 or 600 pounds to get our folks around. So, we really need to work, we're working building by building, there's 14 buildings on our property, we're almost there, and this Community Development Block Grant will literally do the last building to replace the windows with more accessible windows, widen those doorways to fit the wheelchairs through, and make them a little bit warmer. The folks have a little bit hard time regulating their body temperature. So we are so grateful for what the town has done for us. And I could have shown up with half a dozen residents tonight, but they said to keep it short, so I will, because they also like the microphones. But we are so grateful for the opportunity and the support of the town to apply for these funds. All of our folks do live below the poverty line. Any income they have is actually taken by the state of Connecticut to help pay for their care, for their personal care assistance and things like that. Very often, they are at the food pantry right here in town. This is not, you know, it's beautiful to live in Farmington and to live in Unionville, but the reality of their situation is a little bit different, and it really is public housing. It's just beautiful, and we want to keep it that way. I think that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'll open it up for public comment. Any questions? Okay. I'll close the hearing then, and thank you very much for coming tonight. With that, we will move to our next hearing. Paula?
The public hearing will be held on Monday, April 1, 2019, at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall Council of Directors on the Town Council's proposed budget for the fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Dated Farmington, Connecticut, 18th day of March, 2019, Kathleen Egan, Town Manager.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here tonight to present the Farmington Town Council budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. The budget has already gone through several iterations before it is presented to you tonight. It begins at the departmental level with requests coming to the Town Manager in January. At the January 8, 2019 Town Council meeting, the Town Council set a target budget increase at 2% to 2.5%. The Town Manager decreased the department request by $568,351 to reduce the overall budget increase from 4.4% to 2.5% to meet the Town Council's request. A public hearing was held on the Town Manager's proposed seven-year capital improvement plan on February 26, 2019. A public hearing was held on the Town Manager's recommended operating budget on March 12, 2019. The Town Council held workshop sessions on March 13, 14, and 16 to finalize the budget. At these deliberations last month, the Town Council added $61,450 back into the town budget as these items were aimed to advance the Council's goals and objectives and the town of Farmington's strategic plan. After the last workshop session, the changes to the Town Manager's recommended budget were incorporated to create the Town Council's proposed budget. Tonight is the public hearing on the Town Council's proposed budget. The next steps, if tonight's proposed budget are approved, would be the approval budget becomes the Town Council recommended budget, which will be seen, will be sent to the annual town meeting. The annual town meeting will be held on April 15, 2019, at 7:00 in Farmington High School's auditorium. The annual town meeting adjourns to the referendum vote on April 25, 2019. Our budget deliberations and decisions are based on our strategic plan and the goal of maintaining excellent services while being fiscally responsible. The budget we are presenting to you tonight has a property tax rate of 27.97 mils, which is an increase of .78 mils. The average homeowner with a house assessed at $226,777 will see an increase, excuse me, of $177.37 with an overall tax increase of 2.88%. I'm pleased to report that we continue to have a AAA Moody's rating. This is a result of stable governing body, financial management stability, a strong tax base, funding our reserve account appropriately, and a commitment to funding our pension in a responsible manner. This allows our town to have a better bonding interest rate when borrowing and to be a priority town when bonding is being considered. As of October 2018, only 17 towns out of 169 in Connecticut have a AAA Moody's rating. We are strong economically with a healthy tax base ratio. Our residential is 68%, with the commercial being 32%. Last year's revaluation process and the resulting grand list saw a pronounced shift in the value from residential property to commercial industrial property. The consistent growth in our grand list over the past five years evidences the economic strength that Farmington has. Over the past year, there have been 24 new additions to the Farmington business community. These businesses range from retail stores and restaurants to hair salons, educational facilities. Some examples are the Ion Bank, Nardelli's, the Coder School, Red Dog, and there are an increase in the medical and research facilities in the town as well. In 2018, Farmington was prominently featured in the Hartford Business Journal, featuring the economic growth spurt that is taking place in the town. And it was also awarded one of the 2018 Best Places to Live in Connecticut by Niche.com with an A-plus overall grade. Overall, businesses continue to grow and thrive in Farmington, proving that it is a desirable community in which to live and work. We have excellent town services and an exceptional school system. We are extremely proud of the services that we provide for our residents, from curbside leaf pickup to bulk pickup twice a year, and a nationally acclaimed school district. The town of Farmington wholeheartedly believes that volunteers are the true fabric of our community. We continually seek ways to recognize the time, effort, and talent that many volunteers donate to our community. From member-elected boards and commissions and to the volunteer fire department, this town, the citizens of Farmington care about its community and volunteer often. Farmington's volunteers make this a wonderful community in which to live, work, and play. Thank you to all those who contribute and volunteer in the town. The Town Council uses three main goals to guide us in the budget process. We believe we have a responsibility to taxpayers to bring a fiscally responsible budget forward and at the same time, to continue to provide the core services to our citizens. We are proud of our schools. Our students are well-prepared for various future endeavors with a Farmington education. This is one of the reasons that the families move to Farmington and make Farmington their home. We will continue to provide funding to support excellence in education. We must recognize the cost of maintaining the town's infrastructure through the capital budget. During budget deliberations last month, the Town Council discussed capital improvement projects at length. We believe that the cost of not maintaining the town's property, buildings, and equipment will have a significant, long-term, negative impact. The town- The Town Council has made a deliberate effort to increase capital project funding in order to meet the needs of the town and the school system. The proposed budget has a total capital funding plan of $9,158,000. This budget is comprised of a general fund appropriation of $2,868,000, which is a 17.82% increase over last year. Also, a fund balance appropriation of $700,000 for the Parsons property acquisition and $100,000 for the Farmington Center improvements. This proposed capital improvement plan continues to fund town-wide infrastructure improvements that include both technology upgrades and the replacement of necessary equipment for town departments to ensure that high-quality services are offered to residents and our businesses. There are also three bonding questions that will appear on the referendum ballot this year. The first, the Board of Education, $1,990,000 for infrastructure improvements in various schools. These include East Farm School, Union, West Woods, No Wallace, and Irving Robbins. Last year, we had bonding questions to address infrastructure, infrastructure needs related to security and renovations in the schools as well. We are making great strides in addressing the Friar Report again this year. The second bond question, road reconstruction for $2 million. This is, will involve repairs and reconstruction of various town roads and drainage systems. The Public Works Department has completed an aggressive program that paved or reconstructed many local roads during the recent paving season, and this will continue when weather permits. The third bonding question, Fire Department Ladder One replacement at $1.5 million. This is a replacement of the ladder truck that's located at the Farmington Fire Station. Ladder One is a 2001 Pierce. There is one ladder truck in town. We heard during previous meetings that we had to rely on other towns when our ladder truck needed to be fixed. We are so fortunate to have high caliber, a high caliber fire department and the volunteer and full-time men and women, and we must support funding for our, for their equipment. The recommended 2019-20 budget continues the town's commitment to providing and funding exceptional services to our residents and our businesses. The Town of Farmington 2019-20 budget that you see before you tonight was unanimously voted on by the Town Council after much deliberation and compromise. The proposed budget was developed to maintain high service levels for both the town and the Board of Education and to ensure that our capital improvements are met. Farmington is a great town in which to love, to live, work, and play. We remain well-positioned in terms of economic development, exceptional education, and providing high-level services without substantially increasing taxes. The Town Council, following the guidelines in the strategic plan, strives to produce a well-balanced budget to maintain excellent services and meet the needs of the community. I ask that you, the citizens of Farmington, support the budget and the bonding questions that are before you tonight and on April 15 and on April 25 at the referendum, so that we can move our town forward. Now, the Town Manager, Superintendent of Schools, and Chair of the Board of Education will give you details to the budget. Thank you.
Good evening. Members of the public, I present for your review the Town Council's proposed budget for fiscal year 1920. This proposed budget has already gone through several iterations. During budget deliberations last month, the Town Council made changes to the Town Manager's recommended budget. For the operating budget, the Town Council reduced the Board of Education budget by $77,000 and added a total of $61,450 back to the town budget. These items that were added back to the budget are aimed to advance the council goals and objectives and the Town of Farmington strategic plan. During the budget deliberations, the capital, capital budget general fund cash appropriation was reduced by $865,000. However, bonding was increased to continue infrastructure improvements at various schools. The Town's strategic plan and the town's capital improvement policy were the policy guidelines at the forefront when formulating this budget. The general fund budget includes the proposed spending for the town, for the school system, for debt service, and for capital improvements. The proposed budget for West Woods Golf Course and the Recreation Fund and solid waste collection and disposal are also included for your review. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 1920 is $111,344,077, an increase of $5,052,515, or 4.75% above the current budget. The proposed town budget is $30,373,104, an increase of $799,450, or 2.7% above the current expenditure. This budget maintains the high service level our residents expect. Highlights of the town operation by category include the following. The general administration has increased by 1.76%. The public safety has increased by 2.12%. Public works has increased by 1.74%. Community and recreation has increased by 5.95%. And the other category has increased by 4.58%, for a total of $30,373,104, an increase of 2.70%. Some summary of the expenditures include: The salary reserve account and the personnel budget will cover salary adjustments for non-union staff and members of IAF and IBPO. Salary adjustments for SEIU and ASME, as well as contractual step increases, are budgeted in the respective department accounts this year. The contribution to the library is $2,603,023, which is a 2.5% increase above the current budget levels. A new part-time communication position is proposed in this budget. The fire hydrant fees are projected to increase by $22,458, or 2.4% for the upcoming fiscal year. The highway and grounds operation account shows funding for four seasonal summer employees who will be used to supplement regular staff. The highway and grounds traffic control account shows a decrease in the electricity line due to the conversion of streetlights to LED lamps. The purchase of streetlights and the relamping program has led to significant savings. The pension contribution has been increased as a result of an increase in accrued liability for non-active participants and Board of Education non-certified staff. The account also funds required contributions to the defined contribution plan. I've also separated the budget by object, which includes salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increases in each object are as follows. Salaries have increased by 1.96%. Benefits have increased by 4.42%. Supplies have increased by 4.96%. Equipment has increased by 1.93%. Contractual has increased by 3.95%. And utilities has decreased by 2.66%. Again, for a total of $30,373,104, which is 2.7% above last year's budget. In summary, the Town Council's proposed budget is $30,373,104, which is an increase of $799,450, or 2.7% above the current expenditure. Debt service. The debt group of accounts includes appropriations to make principal and, principal and interest payments on the town's long-term bonded debt. The total recommended amount for the next fiscal year is $9,298,362. This is an increase of $899,351, or 10.1, 10.71% from the previous year. The increase in debt service is a result of a full 12 months of payment to the state clean water fund, a loan obligation for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, as well as a second slate state clean water fund loan obligation that the town expects to enter during the fall of 2019. Special services. The refuse collection budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid and bulky waste generated by town residents and the town's landfill operation. This budget proposes no rate increase. The annual fee will remain at $235 per household. The proposed general fund cash appropriation to support the capital improvements is $2,868,000, plus a fund balance appropriation of $800,000 from the general fund. There are also three proposed bonding questions for a total of $5,490,000. General fund capital projects, shown here is a list of the proposed capital budget projects funded by the general fund. Shown here is a list of the proposed capital budgets funded by a fund balance appropriation from the general fund. That's $100,000 for Farmington Center improvements and $700,000 for the potential property acquisition for the Parsons property. The proposed bonding, the first year of the capital plan proposes three bond questions: Infrastructure improvements at various schools for $1,990,000. Road reconstruction at $2 million. And Fire Department Ladder One replacement at $1.5 million. This is for a total of $5,490,000 in proposed bonding. This fiscal year, we are faced with a new, with new and costly mandates from the state of Connecticut as the governor and legislature work to shape the state's fiscal environment. Partial funding of the state's retirement plan is just one of the many mandates that the town may face this year. This budget includes $256,006 for the town's portion of the, of the teacher's retirement plan. In addition, included in the expenditures is $40,000 for Board of Education defined contribution. These funds are a result of a change in retirement benefits for the non-certified collective bargaining agreement. The Board of Education account includes a proposed appropriation of $67,708,605, an increase of 2.9% above the current year's budget. Detail of the Board of Education budget are included in the budget document provided by the Board of Education. I will now call on Superintendent Kathy Greeter, who will discuss the Board of Education budget and the infrastructure improvements at the various school, for the school bonding questions.
Good evening. I'm pleased to present the Board of Education's 2019-2020 school year budget to the Town Council and Farmington community. The school district budget was developed to address the Board of Education's mission and improvement design within the budget guidelines, policies of the Board of Education, state and federal requirements. It is important to note that throughout the budget development process, zero-based budgeting was implemented. Farmington's mission is outlined on this slide, and our mission directly aligns to our improvement design, creating a through line from our mission and strategic improvement priorities to all classrooms, all students, and all schools. This visual represents our strategic improvement design and serves as the foundation of our budget development. The "what" is our vision of the graduate, which was developed in Farmington after a community engagement process in 2010. Farmington led the way in 2010, as school districts across Connecticut are just now developing their own vision of the graduate. The "how," our framework for teaching and learning, or our instructional delivery model, aligned to research on how students learn best. The "why," our core beliefs outline how we interact with one another and how we approach our work with students each day. And the "direction," our theory of action, provides a clear direction for the next level of work for all members of our school district when it comes to our student-centered approach to teaching and learning. Farmington's vision of the graduate outlines a core body of knowledge and the transferable thinking and learning skills all Farmington students are required to master upon graduation. Improvement efforts including curriculum, instruction, assessment, and programming are aligned to our vision of the graduate, beginning in kindergarten and throughout all grade levels. As a result, Farmington remains at the forefront of innovation in teaching, learning, student outcomes, and students as leaders of their own learning at the local, state, and national This slide shows students actively engaged in purpose-driven, self-directed, mastery-based, and socially constructed learning experiences aligned to our vision of the graduate. The Board of Education budget reflects a total budget amount of $67,708,605, with an increase of $1,908,708, or a 2.9% increase over the 2019, 20, sorry, 2018-2019 school district budget. This is a different view of the 2.9% increase. 1.18% of the 2.9% increase reflects collaborative employee board negotiations with all associations in the area of salaries. 1.22% of the 2.9% increase reflects health insurance claim trends that necessitate an increase in health insurance funding for the coming budget year. .40% of the 2.9% increase reflects the renewal of our transportation contract, including GPS and video surveillance for safety and security purposes, as well as special services transportation. .10% of the 2.9% increase reflects all other services, supplies, equipment, and fees, including required increased special services based on student need. The budget maintains core programming, K-12, aligned to Farmington's improvement design and strategic priorities by advancing academic excellence and equity through innovative programming, K-12, supporting students' academic and social-emotional development, providing flexible pathways for challenge and support, promoting comprehensive, research-based, and highly effective staff and faculty development, increasing safety and security measures in schools and in the area of transportation, containing costs through zero-based budgeting and efficiencies to maintain current programming, and maintaining class size levels in accordance with Board of Ed policy. This slide highlights the impressive results we continue to achieve, given the strong alignment from our improvement design to our financial plan, this budget. Farmington continues to be highlighted at the regional, state, and national levels for excellence in teaching, learning, and student outcomes. I'll highlight a few notable accomplishments on this slide, one of which we added very recently. The FHS boys' basketball team was named the 2019 state champions. This is the first state championships for our boys' basketball team, and the second time since 1939 Farmington competed in the state championship game. Go Farmington! Farmington sophomores once again outperformed the national cohort of seniors on the College Work Readiness Assessment, CWRA. This assessment aligns directly to our vision of the graduate, and our students' impressive outcomes are a reflection of our boards and communities' commitment to all students acquiring a core body of knowledge and the transferable thinking and learning skills most valued in college work and life. Students and faculty continue to be recognized at the state and national levels for their many varied accomplishments. One example, the IAR Science Bowl team finished first and attended the National Bowl in Washington, DC. Other impressive recognitions and accomplishments we achieved: First place in the Entrepreneurship Challenge; our economics team earned first place in the annual Harvard Economic Challenge; The Voice FHS Student Newspaper recently was awarded a gold medal for excellence in student media; FHS Theater Productions received 12 Halo Award nominations. These are just a few notable highlights. Please refer to our achievements PowerPoint in our Results and Outcomes booklet online for more detailed accomplishments. Through the community's investment in our schools, Farmington's schools and students continue to lead the way. Here are examples of our favorable state rankings when it comes to expenditures. There's a relationship between the previous accomplishment slide and these rankings. Excellence in education and programming, as well as fiscal responsibility and management. The rankings are based on Connecticut's 169 towns, with one spending the most, 169 spending the least. The next few slides will provide several examples of how the school district has focused on strategic cost allocation and high-quality educational programming. I will highlight two items from this slide to illustrate our strategic approach. We reevaluated the needs for virtualization, resulting in the adoption of new services that allowed reallocation of funding by approximately $25,000 in the operating and $50,000 in the capital budget. Continuous improvement of network topology and collaboration with CEN has leveraged a federal E-rate program, resulting in increased network security, increased bandwidth, and added resiliency. Given our extraordinary outcomes coupled with our favorable expenditure rankings, here are additional examples of how we focus each day on cost containment to arrive at this year's budget level. I'll highlight two items on this slide. An update in security cameras, K-12, will result in annual savings to the operating budget next year and in the future. Farmington successfully was awarded a security grant to support security-related improvements for an estimated $306,444 in grant funding. We have made a strong commitment to safety and security in the Farmington school. We have made a strong commitment to safety and security in the Farmington schools. Here are some additional examples of cost containment measures, and again, I'll highlight two items on this slide. A new occupational therapy equipment collaborative between several school districts is resulting in cost savings. It's also important to note that we collaborate with an ERC on special education programs off-site. One is the Farmington Valley Diagnostic Center. We also share an 18- to 21-year-old program with Simsbury at the University of Hartford, and we share nursing supervision services with Simsbury. All of these practices reflect excellence in programming for our students and significant and sustained cost savings to Farmington. As we hear about regional or shared efforts, Farmington has a long history of regional partnerships with other school districts and shared efforts with the town of Farmington that have benefited the Farmington community. New internal and external lighting projects, which included a partnership with the town, and grant funding will continue to provide savings in electricity over time. It is important to note that this budget has experienced close to a percentage decrease during the budget development and approval process, with reductions to the budget totaling well over $500,000 to arrive at the Board of Education's budget. This once again reflects a commitment to zero-based, needs-based budgeting aligned to our innovative improvement design. The first driver of the budget is salaries. As you can see, this accounts for 66.90% of the total budget and reflects collaborative negotiations between various associations and the Board of Education. Each of the association's negotiated salary increases are listed on this slide. The salary series reflects a 1.75% increase over this year's budget. The second major driver is employee benefits. This account provides for 100% of expected paid claims and the administration of employee health insurance. Farmington's preventative care measurements show best-in-class across almost all items. You can see life and long-term disability costs on this slide as well. In the last few months, we have experienced higher claim costs. Given a trend in higher claim costs, there is a larger increase than in recent years in this account. The employee benefits series accounts for 15.62% of our total budget. There is an 8.20% increase in this account. Health insurance trends are trending at 10% to 12%. Even with this increase, we are below health insurance current cost trends. This services series includes varied items. The series includes accounts for 13.80% of the total budget. It reflects a 3.59% increase. This is an area of cost avoidance and containment through contract negotiations. It also reflects a commitment to providing excellent programming for students requiring special services. The increase in the series is across several objects. Two examples of increases in the services series are in transportation due to our newly-negotiated contract and special services based on student need. The 300 series also includes major facility projects within the operating budget. First, I want to highlight the need to address significant and critical facility needs in our FHS facility. We've included the recently-approved FHS statement of needs in the board's capital budget and in our budget book, as this is an urgent and critical facility need in Farmington, and we thank the Town Council for your partnership in establishing the FHS Building Committee to address these needs. In addition, we are continuing to implement the recommendations of a comprehensive K-8 2018 facility assessment. We now have both short and long-term facility recommendations for our six other school facilities. The information in each of the K-8 facility assessment reports informs both our annual capital budget, as well as our annual major facility projects in this series. In Farmington, our mission and improvement design have been and continue to be clear, compelling, and reflect our tradition of leading the way in education. Now we have a clear and comprehensive plan to improve and align our facilities to our mission and improvement design. The supply series reflects a .53% decrease, or a $10,003 decrease. The 400 series accounts for 2.75% of the total budget. This account provides for facilities used in swimming and ice hockey competitions, and for the purchase of a wide range of items such as instructional health, custodial computer, and testing supplies. This slide reflects the budget level for the equipment series, which accounts for .59% of the total budget. This series reflects equipment requests. There's a slight 2.36% or $9,202 increase for equipment. The dues and fees series is the last series. It reflects a .35% of the total budget with a 2.87% or $6,382 increase. This includes memberships to organizations and liability and property insurance. The increase in the series is attributed to contractual increases in liability insurance. The next slide is an overview of our major budget drivers that reflect a 2.9% increase over the 2018-2019 school district budget, all of which I reviewed within this presentation. I'm going to quickly go over the capital request for the Board of Education. In technology infrastructure, $480,000, and security, $275,000, and that's for new cameras, ballards, and updated public address systems in our schools. In structural/architectural, $25,000, and MEP, our district-wide mechanical equipment. We have $282,000 in cash and $320,000 in bonding. Related to the bonding is $1,670,000 for East Farms office relocation, media center relocation, and expansion. Other items in the bonding would be the Union Elevator, IAR heat, AC rooftop unit, design of West Woods dehumidification, and Noah Wallace Media Center AC design. In code and safety compliance, we have $90,000, and that will be for a Union Fire Alarm Panel and West District Mechanical Time Locks. In cafeteria equipment, $25,000. FFNE classroom furniture, $150,000, and that will provide new furniture for all first-grade classrooms across the district. And again, that will be a total of $3,317,000 in capital. The 2019-2020 budget supports all students to achieve academic and personal excellence, exhibit persistent effort, and live as resourceful, inquiring, and contributing global citizens. Farmington continues to lead the way in excellence in teaching and learning, as well as student outcomes, achievements, and in the area of operations. Our financial plan supports and advances these efforts. We have taken a long-term, strategic, and highly-effective approach to cost containment, avoidance, and savings, so that resources are aligned directly to our mission and improvement design at the student level. We provide a student-centered, nurturing, learning environment that is purpose-driven, self-directed, and mastery-based, with a commitment to socially-constructed learning. We take great pride in implementing a strategic approach to improvement with an eye on cost containment through collaborative negotiations, partnerships, ongoing reviews of programming, facilities, and staffing to realize efficiencies, knowing that it is essential to do so on behalf of our students and the taxpayers of Farmington, especially with uncertain financial support from grants and state-level funding. This is a collaborative endeavor with all members of our school district community, seeking out new and innovative approaches that will contain or reduce costs over time while ensuring excellence in all that we do. The clarity in our improvement design greatly assists in systems alignment, including resource allocation and implementation of strategic improvement priorities that enhance student outcomes enacted by all members of our school district community. Our student, faculty, school, and district accomplishments, continuous improvement efforts, rigorous curriculum, and high-quality programming have contributed to a nationally-recognized education here in Farmington. The 2019-2020 budget is responsive to our community and to our students, the next generation of pioneers, scholars, contributors, and citizens. Board Chair Chris Bagan will now come up to the podium to provide comments about the Board of Education's 2019-2020 budget. Thank you.
It's a tough act to follow when Kathy goes through that, but I thought tonight, instead of, you know, just rehashing some of my comments that were made during the process of the workshop, I would just take an opportunity to thank a lot of people, starting with Kathy, Kim Nguyen, Veronica, Matt, Tim, Vince, and everybody on the administrative staff that puts this budget together. It's, it's a very involved process, takes a long time, and everybody takes it very seriously, and we hope that this process was transparent and informational for everybody, not only the Town Council, but the community. So I'd like to thank them. I'd like to thank my fellow board members for their commitment to this budget process. You know, we had a lot of fruitful discussion about the budget and, and considered it thoughtfully in terms of our approving of it. I'd like to thank the members of the community. There's certain members of the community who've been coming out and supporting the Board of Education in their endeavors in, in passing the budget, in approving the budget, and giving their input and support. It doesn't go unnoticed, and I'd like to thank you for, for coming. And I'd like to thank the Town Council, including Kathy, you know, for the budget process and working together and collaborative with us. I mean, my earlier comments, I really wanted to focus on the partnership we should have, and I sensed that through this process. I felt that we worked together, we are partners in this, we are driven by not only our fiscal responsibility, but our education, to deliver on the educational mission. And I think with the budget, and we acknowledge that some reductions were made to it, that we did not feel that that sacrificed our educational mission and goals to provide a top-quality education, continue that legacy of excellence we have here in Farmington. And not only that, but also for reconvening the Building Commission for the Farmington High School project, its acknowledgement of what is really an existential crisis here in, in Farmington with regard to our educational infrastructure. And we're addressing that. We feel confident with the K-8 report and then the Building Committee that we are having a long-term view to addressing those needs. And I want to thank you on behalf of myself and the board. The budget, the reductions that were made were passed unanimously. Very, the least impactful adjustments were made to the budget, so students, students were not impacted, and we're delivering on that mission. But you know, as I said, I also want to, you know, in thanking everybody, I also want to sort of charge the Town Council and the community as a whole that we can't lose sight of, of these infrastructure needs and our desire to continue to provide the educational excellence, legacy of excellence. And I think, you know, this is always the most wonderful slide to see, you know, how we're accomplishing that, and I hope the committee and the council and the community recognize this. When you look at that, I said this in my earlier comments during the process, this is not a list where we want to be number one, because we'd be failing on our duty and obligation to the community as a whole to run a fiscally-responsible board and educational system, but we don't want to be the number 160 or 169 on this, because then we'd be failing our students and the families of Farmington. So if you look at this, and it's amazing to see the, the achievements our students and our administrators have against a backdrop of fiscal responsibility. So I want to thank the council, I want to thank the community as a whole, and charge both of the community and the council, and, you know, the board and everybody here, that we have to continue and face these challenges, financial challenges, in order that we don't, you know, sacrifice our, our reputation for delivering a top-notch educational system in Farmington. So I want to thank everybody. I think it was a fruitful process. I think it was deliberative, collaborative, and it was very much appreciated. So thank you to the council, thank you to the community, and just continue to address these challenges as we go forward, and hopefully working together both on the infrastructure needs and on operational needs as we go forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The grand list. The grand list is broken down into three categories: real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. The real estate account shows a .22% increase. The personal property account shows a 1.93% increase, and the motor vehicle account shows a 1.05% increase. In summary, the grand list increased by .38%, or $13,996,861, for a total grand list Revenues, grants, charges, and others. I've broken down revenues into nine categories: other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, others, Westwood's golf course and fund equity. In summary, projected non-tax revenues are $9,821,827, or a 22.37% increase over the current year. The proposed tax and mill rate. The proposed general fund budget will require a property tax rate of 27.97 mills, an increase of .78 mills, or 2.88%. This illustrates that the average residential assessment will see an increase of $177.37 in their taxes. In other words, $100,000 of assessed value equals $2,797 in taxes. The 2019 upcoming budget schedule, a few days to note. The annual town meeting is April 15, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Farmington High School Auditorium. The referendum vote is Thursday, April 25, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you for your presentations, and I will open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council, please come up to the podium.
Good evening. Matt Hutt Wagner for Deepwood. I'm here tonight in support of the town budget. It's a reasonable budget that maintains the services and infrastructure the residents of town expect. As parents with kids in the school system, I especially support this area of the budget, including the capital improvements. Thanks to those who worked on this year's budget, and I look forward to its passage later this month. Just one other non-budget. I was at the Maker Fair yesterday at the library, and it was really great, great. My kids had a great time, and I hope that continues every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Good evening. Demetrius GNR, 56 Basswood Road. First, I want to congratulate all of you. I have, for many years, observed how things are done in this town, and many other towns, state, and federal level. The level of respect that I've seen and the way you dealt with each other is something to be proud of. You, you made your points strongly. I saw many of you on TV. You haven't, you haven't made every one of these meetings, and you should. If you have a strong feeling about something, you should express it. That's what democracy is all about. But at the same time, you respected each other, and you came up with a compromised budget that makes a lot of sense for the town, especially when you take, put it into the context of minus .4 last year and a 2.88% increase this year. That's an average of only 1.225 per year for the last two years. You should be very proud of yourselves. Also, I, this is, I don't get up here very often, but I also want to tell you that we're running an excellent school system, and if you compare the data, as I have, I used to be the chairman of the Education Committee at the state level when I was a legislator, maybe for 12 years or 14 years, something like that. And we would hear all kinds of complaints, all kinds of presentation of data. What this school system does so efficiently, given the awards that we get, given the recognition we get, again, it's something that we all should be proud. Of course, I've had two sons who went to the system, and they themselves, of course, have succeeded and done very well as a result, I would say, of the school system. I also want to tell you that because you have been very prudent in spending our money, that makes it easier for us to do the next big project, which is really dealing with a high school. And I encourage you to be cost-efficient, be, you know, I'm an economist. The first thing we teach in economics is efficiency because of limited economic resources. And I think you should always have that in mind. No waste. We don't waste. We don't want to have waste. But at the same time, the needs are there, and they have to be addressed. I'm going to give you a couple pointers here, based on my own life experience dealing with high schools. My first high school was really on the island of Samos in Greece, where I was born. I'm telling you that we had a better high school condition on a little island in Greece called Samos than we have right now here in Farmington. We have to deal with it. The second high school that I attended, because I moved here when I was a teenager, was the Rosendale High School in Boston. Some of you may know the area. It's... It's next to Dedham, West Rockway. That high school was built at about the same time, I believe, that our old building here in the high school has been built. And they took it down 40 years ago to rebuild a new high school. That is, because it aged and the requirements of today are quite different than when I was growing up and going through school, and we need to really be able to be competitive, not only within the state but also nationally and internationally. So I encourage you, I know these are difficult decisions, and it affects taxes, affects other things, but at the same time, it is a long-term investment. We're talking about investment that will be good for us for the next 50 to 100 years. So bite the bullet, do the right thing on that, too. And again, I want to thank you, the town manager, who's done an excellent job. My God, she came in with only a 2% increase after you, you know, you voted some limit. And Kathy, we are proud of you and how you manage the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay. Next item on the agenda. Any new items? Public comment? Regular public comment. If there's any public comment on any other issues, please come up to the podium. Thank you. Reading of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve March 12th, 2019 regular Town Council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any corrections?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just on page four, under the Board of Education, I believe I gave a summary and mentioned that Scott Hurwitz had been appointed the new principal at Farmington High School, and his last name is actually spelled H-U-R-W-I-T-Z.
Okay. Any other corrections? All those in favor as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Next.
Madam Chair, I move to approve March 13th, 2019 regular Town Council meeting on the budget.
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair, I move March 14th, 2019 regular Town Council meeting on the budget.
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair, I move March 16th, 2019 regular Town Council meeting on the budget.
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair, I move March 26th, 2019 regular Town Council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any corrections?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On page four, in the paragraph that starts off, "After discussion, the following changes were made," under part one, I think the wording might just be missing a word here, but add paragraph E, "The committee shall begin to consider," and then it says, "and do diligence." I think we just said, "and do due diligence," which is, yeah.
See why you'd leave that out. Okay? Any other corrections? All those in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. Kathy? Just the letter to the.
I just attached a letter to our state legislators about the teachers' pensions, so that was in your packet.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's my understanding, actually, that that pension came out, was not in the bill that left committee. So Cost sent out an email on Friday, I think at 7:00 PM. So I think that's out of the bill.
Okay. Well, good.
And just a follow-up on that. That is true in the Education Committee. Hopefully, no other committees try and add that back in like Finance, but it does look very good.
Great. Report of committees. UConn, no meeting right now. Land acquisition.
No report.
Green efforts.
Green efforts meets tomorrow, and just a reminder, April 27th is the annual Farmington Town Cleanup. There'll be opportunities for groups and businesses and individuals to participate and to compete for the heaviest haul.
Thank you. Farmington Village Center Committee.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we had our, was it last week? Yeah, I think it was. It's going by fast. Last week, we had a public engagement for the community to come out and get a presentation from the BSC Group, the consultant that we hired to kind of review our Farmington Village Center. I think we pretty much, it was at the community center, and I believe there was about 60 residents that showed up. It was broken out into several different groups where individuals had an opportunity to kind of vote or express their opinions on certain things that were discussed, like sidewalks, you know.
Sinage.
Sinage, you know, even.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks, and individuals had an opportunity to kind of express their opinions as well as vote. I believe that's being consolidated, and once the BSC Group consolidates everything, they're going to post the results online on our website.
Thank you. Auditor, Ad-Hoc Committee.
We met, and we have an update coming in the form of recommendation later on in the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Report of the council chair and liaisons. I would just, again, like to thank the Board of Education and Kathy Greeter, and thank you for your comments tonight. I do think I agree with you. It's a collaborative effort, and hopefully we move forward, and so does our budget on the 25th. So we thank you. And thank Kathy Egan and Joe and Erica and everyone in the town staff as well for working together to move this forward. And again, it is, April 15th is our next meeting, as you see up on the board, and April 25th is the vote. So please get out and support the budget and the bonding questions. Board of Ed.
Madam Chair, the Board of Ed met on March 18th, and one of the updates from the superintendent was about the critical repairs of some areas of roof at the Farmington High School. It looks like an estimate right now has those at around $223,000. So these are areas that were not included in previous, you know, bonding projects and work going on right now. I know that Vince has been in talks with Joe Zwecky, and it looks like there's some areas where we'll be able to, they'll be able to realize some money to go towards those projects or those critical repairs. The current roof project looks to be under budget. That was the bonding from, that we approved last year. There's cash capital from Farmington High School projects at around $57,000, and also the superintendent proposed using some open choice funding, tuition, revenue towards the balance of the expense for those repairs, which will probably mean postponing some classroom furniture from this current budget year to move money towards those repairs. So, and I just think it's important to note that the superintendent, the administration, the Board of Education, they're attempting to balance the need to have more work done in those areas, but also trying to defer some major projects and major expenses wherever possible, considering the potential for a building project for a new renovated high school. So it's quite a balancing act. And then the other big discussion at that meeting was the superintendent giving recommendations for areas of reduction in response to the Town Council's reduction to the Board of Ed's proposed 1920 budget. And as we talked about, or we heard before, all reductions are from what is referred to as Tier One reductions, keeping those effects away from students, and the board voted to approve those recommendations.
Thank you. Chamber.
Last week, the chamber had their pizza taste-off with many different pizza bakers. It was well-attended, a great fundraiser. No other items on the agenda going forward.
Thank you. Economic Development.
Nothing to report. The next regularly scheduled meeting is April 10th at 5:30 PM in the Town Council Chambers.
Thank you. Farmington Historic District.
Nothing to report.
Housing.
The Housing Authority meets next on April 10th at 6:00 PM at Maple Village.
Human Relations.
So the Human Relations Commission had a very well-attended and lively discussion at their last meeting, last Wednesday. The Commission's planning an informal forum for local businesses in the fall, most likely in October, and some of the topics that they're looking on, looking at covering would be accessibility for customers and employees, and they're also talking about perhaps adding part of the discussion to be towards employing people with disabilities and having companies that participate in those sort of programs give examples and best practices. And the Commission's also looking to, moving forward in the next several months to examine their mission and do some short-term and long-term planning. At their September meeting, they're calling it kind of a mini-retreat. They're going to look for some ideas about short-term and long-term planning moving forward for the Commission. And they meet next on May 22nd at 6:30 at the Community Center.
Okay. Thank you. Library Board.
Yes, the Library Board canceled their March meeting. However, they held the Maker Fair yesterday at the Farmington Library, so there was a wide range of activities for participants to join in, such as button-making, bead necklaces, paper circuits for children to learn about circuitry and electronics, magnetic slime claymation, virtual reality, how to make your own bath bomb, and demonstration from the Farmington Robotics Team. So there was activities throughout the library on both levels, in different rooms, and many people attended the event, and it was a lot of fun and a great success. The next scheduled meeting of the Library Board is April 17th at the Farmington Public Library.
Thank you. TPC.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the Planning and Zoning had an informal hearing with a new owner of the, what was used to call the Epicare Plaza, which is M&R Liquor and Starbucks. It was quite interesting that the owner came in, wanted to get some feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and sharing their thoughts of what he's planning on doing. So more to come for the community to actually, you know, if you want to hear what's going on, definitely attend some of the Planning and Zoning and some changes, good changes will be happening with that plaza.
Thank you. Unionville Historic.
Yes, the Unionville Historic District Commission canceled their regularly scheduled meeting in March since the focus was really on the Historic Home Seminar that was held, which was also a big success. Their next meeting is April 4th at 7:00 PM in the Town Council Chambers.
WPCA.
We met two weeks ago during our budget process. The pump situation that was resolved is still looking good, and the construction is still on schedule and on budget. Good news to report there, and the April meeting is canceled. Next meeting will be in May.
Okay. Thank you. UVIA, sorry. Nothing to report. Okay. Any other liaison committees? Okay. Report of the town manager, Kathy.
You have the written report in front of you. Just one item, just again, it's hard to believe, but Memorial Day Parade is coming up. So the Memorial Day Parade is Monday, May 27th, and the parade in Farmington will form up at 8:00 AM and step off at 8:30, and the Unionville section of town will form up at 10:00 AM and step off at 10:30. So you'll, I'll remind you again at the next meeting, but just so, you know, get ready for the Memorial Day Parade. You have the quarterly reports. I don't know if you have any specific questions, but as you can see, we have the strategic plan and with some updates on that, and then some various reports based on the strategic plan and the goals.
Okay. I just want to say at the onset that thank you for all this information. It clearly shows how much is going on in the town and with Kathy and with the staff. So thank you for the updates, and if there are any questions about anything, please. Anything for Kathy? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. Motion to accept the town manager's report.
So move. Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Great. Anything? No. N1.
That's me. I move to approve the attached Town Council recommended budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Second.
And just, you all have the N1 on your places. Just put that in place of the N1 that's there. There was just a rounding error, so just use the N1 that was left.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N2.
I move that the attached resolution, item 1 through 9, be forwarded to the annual town meeting with the recommendation that they be approved.
Second.
Yep. So as you can see here, that the resolutions that you're going to be, what will be considered at the annual town meeting, this is just our basic paperwork. It's that our annual town report be approved, that the budget be recommended by the Town Council at tonight's meeting, go, be approved, and go forward to the referendum vote on April 25th. We also have that a second town meeting will be held on April 29th, and a second referendum to be held on May 9th if the first referendum fails. And then we have our various bonding questions. We have the appropriation of $1.990 million for infrastructure improvements at the various schools. We have the $2 million for the road reconstruction. The item 7 is the $1,500 for the ladder truck. It lists the time of the voting places and the noticing of the annual town meeting. So this is our standard paperwork and resolutions.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N3.
I move to adopt the attached resolution which authorized the town manager to sign a grant application for small city community development grant and to execute an assess agreement under a small city community development black grant program.
Second.
This is what Nancy Parent and New Horizon spoke about today. I think this is great if we could get this for, this is another $900,000. So this is just authorizing me to sign and do the paperwork for the grant.
Thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair, just a comment in the third whereas clause. I think there should be a dollar sign before the $900,000.
Oh, yeah. I'll include that. Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N4.
I move to approve the attached warning for the April 29th, 2019 second town meeting and the May 9th, 2019 referendum.
Second.
This is the attached warning that calls for a second town meeting and referendum if the first budget referendum fails. This will not be needed if the budget passes on April 25th.
Okay. And it automatically goes away?
Yes.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N5.
I move that the firm of PKF O'Connor Davies LLP of Weathersfield, Connecticut be appointed as the town independent auditor for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2019.
Second.
So you guys probably all remember, we charged the Audit Ad-Hoc Subcommittee with essentially revisiting and looking up, you know, best practice and, you know, potentially sending out an RFP, really due to the fact that we've had the same firm for pushing, I think, 18 years. Is my number right, Patty?
It might be 19.
19 years?
Yeah.
About 18, 19 years. And different towns, you know, one of the things we found out there, that different towns do it different ways. Some towns have had firms for quite some time. Some firms have it apparently built into their charter to switch every five years. So we decided to go out with an RFP to see what else was out there. Four firms responded. They're listed in the update here. All were impressive in their own ways, honestly. And the following criteria was used, I mean, this isn't exclusively what was used, but we essentially compared costs, a local presence, experience both nationally and particularly in Connecticut with different municipalities, and we were more partial to municipalities of similar size as us in particular and where we'd fit in on their spectrum. We shortlisted those four firms to two firms, which was Bloom Shapiro, our current firm, obviously, as well as our, I'm sorry, PKF O'Connor Davies. We interviewed both firms. Both came in with very well-prepared teams, answered our questions well, and ultimately I think we would have, you know, been comfortable with either. Both were great. And due to the variables kind I described before, as well as, you know, kind of approaching that best practices and, you know, switching things up every five or so years, we thought it would be a good time. it would be a good time to, you know, at least recommend a change to the full town council, which I think is what we'll talk about now. You know, the possibility of, you know, appointing, obviously, PKF O'Connor Davies. And, you know, kind of open to answer any questions or talk about some of our findings.
Questions or comments? Patty, do you want to add anything right now?
The only thing I would add is PKF O'Connor's, the cost for theirs was very competitive with Bloom Shapiro's, so it's slightly more, but.
In the ballpark.
Really, in the ballpark, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point, actually. They were not the cheapest. They also were not the most expensive, but they were not necessarily the cheapest firm. That's a good point.
Questions? I just want to say thank you to you both and to Joe. I know that, I'm sure it took quite a bit of time to go through and to send out the bid to begin with the, you know, and then to interview and to come to your conclusions. So thank you for this, for the, this review this year. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. No other questions, then? We'll move it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you. N. six.
I move to approve the following American with Disability Act ADA policy and grievance procedure.
Second.
If you remember from last year, in April, we update all our policies. So N. six through N. ten is just an update of our policies. There were no, no changes to the policies. It's just a standard thing that they ask us to do. It helps us with our grants and some different things. So the policies are reviewed, and if there were any updates, we would make them at this time, but there are not any updates, so we're just reapproving them.
Any questions? All those in favor of N. six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N. seven.
I move to adopt the following fair housing resolution for the town of Farmington and to authorize the town manager to sign and distribute the said resolution.
Second.
Questions? It's the same.
Yep.
Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N. eight.
I move to adopt the attached affirmative action plan for the town of Farmington.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N. nine.
I move to adopt the following compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four statement for the town of Farmington and authorize the town manager to sign and distribute said resolution.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N. ten.
I move to adopt the following fair housing policy statement for the town of Farmington and authorize the town manager to sign and distribute said resolution.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N. eleven.
I move to cancel April twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen town council meeting.
Second.
Are there any questions?
That's a long time in between meetings.
We will all be together on the fifteenth. Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N. twelve.
I move to approve the following property tax refund totaling of twelve thousand thirty-four dollars and six cents.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
No objection.
Okay. So.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much.